It's 7:02, we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. We'll start with the transmitting of Treasury warrants 1414A, 15 and 15A. Do we have a motion? May I make a motion? May I second it? On favor? It's unanimous. We have no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move directly to our 7 o'clock scheduled agenda item with Scott C. Grant, Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and it's regarding a request to use the town common for tree lighting ceremony on December 5, 2009. And I understand this is CFO's pinch hitting for Mr. Grant. Have a seat, please. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks. Scott's home, suffering from a cold he caught from one of the boys. No, I think it's just cold, cold. I'm here on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee requesting the Board's permission for the use of the common for our annual tree lighting, which will be on Saturday, December 5th this year. We expect mainly to have the same programs that we've had in the past, which is an ice sculpture that is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and Qantas and various other organizations. Last year was the Reading Colop and Winchester Hospital that also helped sponsor it. We're going to have free hay rides beginning at 4 o'clock, and they usually run for a couple of hours. And Community Fund will again be selling their pewter tree ornaments that night. We're going to have free hot chocolate and cookies again, and we're hoping the high school cheerleaders will once again be able to assist us in serving the hot chocolate and cookies. United Methodist Church again is going to be there to sing some carols. The Minutemen with their lanterns are going to be requested. Santa, we expect to arrive about 6 o'clock, and after Santa turns on all the tree lights, people are welcome to go visit him in the Fourth of July building after that. Our fire department again will be collecting toys inside the Fourth of July building for Toys for Children. And I just want to mention that we do have a few red fleece throws remaining from our Fourth of July building, so those will be available for purchase. Make a nice gift, and it's first come, first served, because we don't really have that many left. I think it's less than a dozen. There is no rain or snow date. We've only been snowed out one year since we've been carrying this on, so we've been pretty fortunate in that regard. A more detailed printout of our schedule will be available next month in the town crier. We'll make it available to cable, and it'll also be on our website, which is funonthefourth, fourth spelled out, dot com. And in case of any inclement weather, we advise people to check our website in case we can't get plowed out, so we might have to snow out the date. We don't know, but hopefully not. A little bit of snow would be nice on the common, though.
Good. Questions or comments?
Just comments are, it's a great event every year. It's always fun, and I remember the snow year. And you're right, a little snow is good. Too much snow, not so much. But thank you for doing it, and obviously it's a testament to all the organizations in town who believe in it and get the rounds around and support it. So I'm psyched about it. Thank you.
Anything else? Guess that's it. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the Chairman, the Fourth of July Committee, the request to use the common for tree lighting on December 5th.
Second?
Second.
Okay. May I second it? Anything further? On favor? Unanimous? And thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all the work.
And I hope to see you all there, and I can wish you a happy holiday at that time. Thank you.
Sounds good. Since our next agenda item was published for 7:10 start time, why don't we move to communications, and then we'll go back. Please, Ms. Scott.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you received, as you know, a letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, specifically from its Executive Director, Catherine Craven, announcing that the Mass School Building Authority has voted favorably to invite the Wilmington School District to collaborate with them to conduct a feasibility study on Wilmington High School. It's my understanding that there were 14, I think, 13 or 14 out of 225 new or refreshed statement of interest submittals for 2009 that were voted on at this time. And so it is an indication that the town did a very good job. You will recall that the Board of Selectmen participated back in June of 19, of what, I'm sorry, June of 2008, and we had hoped at that point that we were going to find something out several months later, but in fact, it took a while due to certain economic pressures. But at this point, the School Building Authority has recognized the town's statement of interest as one of the better ones. And in doing so, I'm also pleased that they made a comment about the well-maintained facility, noting that clearly there are some programmatic issues that we all understand and that the MSBA understands, but they made some very favorable comments about the way the town has kept up the building. During the feasibility study phase, MSBA would collaborate with the town to determine the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solution to the facility's problem. I would stress that the invitation is not approval of a project. It's merely an invitation to collaborate on the study itself and to invite the school district to work, to explore potential solutions to all of those problems that have been identified. So there is no decision being made at this point. Any decision requiring an appropriation of funds obviously has to go to a town meeting. So at this point, we're waiting, as you see from the letter, for the MSBA folks to contact us to discuss the various steps involved, including executing an initial compliance certificate, approving a composition of a district school building committee, and then executing an actual feasibility study agreement, going through the MSBA's Owners' Project Management Review Panel, and ultimately selecting a feasibility study designer. When we have more information and when we have a sense of what something like this would cost, we'll come back to the Board of Selectmen. Now, I had had this conversation, as the Chairman knows, with the Chairman and with the Superintendent of Schools, and would suggest that if we have some of this information, and perhaps even if we don't have all of the information, it might be helpful to schedule a meeting at some point with the school committee and the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Chairman, just to discuss next steps. And if that's something that the Board is inclined to do, just so we can keep this process moving, keep it public, let people know what the process entails, I could arrange that for a meeting whenever the school committee is available, perhaps the next meeting or the one thereafter.
Yeah, if you could look into that and let us know.
Okay. Well, did you want to?
Yes, at that, we'll take up our 7:10 appointment. It's with Joseph M. Gleason of Verizon New England, Inc., and it's regarding a public hearing relative to the request of Verizon New England, Inc. and Reading Municipal Light Department to place one stub pole on Cunningham Street. And this is a continued public hearing from our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, Joseph Gleason, Right-of-Way Agent with Verizon New England, Inc., office located 28 Diana Lane in Drakeett. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of a public hearing regarding the request of Verizon and Reading Municipal Light for the placement of a stub pole on the easterly side of Cunningham Street, approximately 15 feet north of the Beeching Avenue intersection. When last I was before you, there were two issues that arose relative to the placement of this stub pole, first being that there may be a need for some tree trimming and/or tree removal at the proposed locus. In addition, there was some concerns raised by some parties in interest relative to the possibility that the stub pole might be within the buffer zone of delineated wetlands area. Subsequent to the meeting, I had contacted the Right-of-Way Manager at Verizon and conveyed the issues to him. He in turn turned this matter over to Reading Municipal Light. They're actually the parties who are seeking the placement of the stub pole. And I received a communication on Wednesday, the 7th of October, indicating that a representative from Reading Municipal Light did meet with the DPW Director for the Town of Wilmington. There was a meeting in the field to discuss the location and its proximity to any delineated wetlands. The communication I received indicates that there would only be a minimal amount of trimming necessary relative to that location, so apparently there won't be any tree removals required, and that it was their collective sentiment that they were not within 100-foot buffer zone of any wetlands. However, the email did indicate that there would be some memorialization of this meeting, and that it would be forwarded to both the Board and to the town manager. So I don't want to, I'm reading from the email, I don't want to be presumptuous. You may have received communication that says something different, so I'm hoping they sent that communication, and hoping it says what my email says it says.
We do have communication here to the town manager from the Superintendent of Public Works, and I think it substantively says what you had relayed.
Then I have nothing further than relative to the request, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Why don't we go to the Board with questions or comments, and then make sure there are no questions from the audience. Anything from the Board? I think you have answered the questions, and we also have the written communication from Don Honor's side. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, one of the other items you asked me to instruct, you instructed me on was the issue of wetlands, and I know that Mr. Smith indicated that the Superintendent said there were no wetlands issues. But I just want to confirm that that came from the conservation agent as well. So we did talk with Winifred McGowan, and she indicated that there are, in fact, wetlands on that parcel, but there's no need to file under the Wetlands Act because of the buffering, et cetera.
Good. Very good. Questions, comments, or a motion from the Board?
I move to request of Verizon New England, Inc. and Reading Municipal Light Department to place one stub pole on Cunningham Street.
I'll second. May I second it? Anything further? On favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
Thanks for the effort.
At that, let's resume with communications, please.
Mr. Chairman, we've received a letter that was addressed to the town clerk from Matthew Cox, who is resigning as a member of the Wilmington Housing Authority due to his new work schedule and travel requirements. The letter was received on September 28th. It's my understanding that he is, at least from my conversations with the Executive Director of the Housing Authority and with the town clerk that he has in fact stepped down and is no longer participating as a member of the Housing Authority. Toward that end, I sent a letter on behalf of the Board after consulting with the Chairman to Robert Di Pasquale of the Housing Authority and confirming that the Selectmen and the Housing Authority would meet at their next meeting on October 26th here in Room 9 for the purpose of filling the vacancy of the Housing Authority as a result of Mr. Cox's resignation. This constitutes the public notification to, under the statute, to anybody who may be interested in submitting their intentions of going after that particular seat. In fact, there's already been one letter that was sent in, copy of which has been provided to the Board of Selectmen, from a Stacy Murphy, who is a Wilmington resident and has indicated her interest in filling the vacancy on the Housing Authority. She notes that her background and her experience in this area, she believes, would be conducive to her appointment, and I provided that information to the Board. As is customary, when we have a vacancy on one of these Boards, I did acknowledge again on behalf of the Board of Selectmen receipt of her letter expressing interest in being appointed, and through the direction of the Chairman, invited her to attend the meeting next week where she would be given an opportunity to address both Boards, the remaining members of the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen. In two weeks, that's right, I'm sorry, on the 26th, the Board's next meeting. And I'm not aware of anybody else who's expressed an interest, but my sense is now that it's even more public than it was before, we may get other people expressing an interest as well.
Any questions or comments regarding the process or where we go from here? Good? Okay.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Kyra, could you maybe just expand or give a three-minute description of what the role of this individual is, or, well, I guess I'll just end the question there. Perhaps there are individuals that may be inclined to express interest, but at this point, don't necessarily know what they're interested in.
In terms of serving in the Housing Authority?
Yes.
The Housing Authority is a five-member board. It's really sort of a quasi-state agency. It's not a town agency per se. For staggered five-year terms, and they serve on the Housing Authority, and there's a fifth member, although the position is currently vacant, that is appointed by the Commonwealth, typically the Governor, but officially through the Department of Housing and Community Development. That five-member board hires staff to operate the public housing in the town of Wilmington, most notably Deming Way, and the elderly housing that's available, also housing that's available for those folks that have particular handicaps that would make them eligible for housing. And they also have responsibility over some of the Section 8 housing, which is scattered houses throughout the town. And in each case, people who are residents of any of those facilities pay on a sliding scale based upon what they owe. They don't own the property, but they pay a rent that is collected by the Housing Authority, and it's the Housing Authority that is the overall policymaking body that administers, again, through their staff, housing programs for folks that are eligible. That's sort of a synopsis. I'm sure somebody who is very involved would know more about that. I would stress that they don't come under the town, they don't come under the town manager or the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen is one of the bodies by state statute that has appointing authority when there's a vacancy, similar to if there is a vacancy in the school committee, the Board of Selectmen would meet with the remaining members of the school committee to make an appointment. They do the same with the Housing Authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sit.
You want to remind the, I would like to remind the Board and the public at large of the public information meeting regarding the Olin Superfund site. The town, in conjunction with the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, will conduct the public information meeting to discuss the ongoing remedial investigation at that Eam Street site. Representatives from the town, both of those agencies, the federal and state agency mentioned, will be present at the meeting along with representatives or representatives of the Olin Corporation. The meeting will be held on Monday, October 19th, at 7:00 PM at the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium, which is located at 25 Pater Lane. And we've disseminated this information to the various town agencies involved, and I know that the EPA has sent out information to anybody who has signed any of the lists, certainly to the Work Committee and others. We will have our environmental consultant, Geo Insight, at that meeting. So again, the Board, of course, is encouraged to attend if they can, if their schedule allows, and the public as well. It's my understanding that it's going to be on cable, and so WCTV will be there to broadcast the session, and there'll be some repeat showings of it as well. The Board has been provided a copy of a letter that was sent to town clerk Sharon George from our town council's office, specifically, the letter itself was authored by Rich Huxham, and concerns a summary of the conflict of interest law for municipal employees. This past July 1st, Governor Patrick approved legislation that made significant amendments to Massachusetts laws that are related to open meetings of governmental bodies, public records, elections, campaign financing, and lobbying. The amendments include mandatory education and training requirements for municipal employees. Section 84 of the legislation requires the State Ethics Commission to publish on its website a summary of the conflict of interest law for municipal employees, and that has been made a part of this letter. The legislation also requires that the town clerk of each town provide the summary of the law to every municipal employee within 30 days of becoming such an employee and on an annual basis thereafter. And then each municipal employee must also sign a written acknowledgment that he or she has been provided with a summary, and the written acknowledgment must be filed with the town clerk. For those people who are covered under this as a municipal employee, the clerk has until the end of December to provide that information to all of those folks. There are several significant components of this law. One is, as we just indicated, the town clerk must provide the summary legislation, which is, you know, six or eight pages, to every person who is covered under this, and I suspect that the Chairman may be speaking about this in more depth. There are also, each of these people who are covered under this law is also required to undergo training in the form of an exam that they can go online to take. It's a 25-question exam, which doesn't take very long, and there are certain prompts in the exam, but each person who is covered needs to take this exam now by April. Originally, it was by the end of December, but they have now pushed this off until April. And then the Board of Selectmen, in this case, in the case of Wilmington, must also designate by date in January an individual who would serve as the liaison to the State Ethics Commission on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. That has to be done by January 27th of 2010. So the three trigger dates are December 28th to distribute the summary, January 27th of next year to appoint a municipal liaison to the Ethics Commission, and April 2nd to have everybody covered under this act to be trained.
Now, I'm, generally speaking, I'm of the opinion that it's been in vogue recently, and I think that it's always the case that it's, to pass "ethic," quote-unquote, "ethics reform" sounds good. You know, I mean, who's opposed to keeping government clean? But, you know, it's usually an exercise in, it's usually a wasteful exercise of resources, you know? And in this case, I mean, my take on it is, we as members of the Board of Selectmen, for us to have to go online every couple of years, no big deal. You know, we can do that. It's part of what we might expect when we run for office, but when you look at the fact that this legislation is supposed to cover all officials of the town, volunteers, paid, unpaid employees, I mean, it couldn't have been intended this way, but in reading the summary, to me, it includes everybody from, you know, the Board of Selectmen to, you know, the folks who work the cafeteria at the schools, to, you know, volunteers, the friends at the library, to senior tax work-off candidates, the whole gamut. And you're talking, I gotta believe, 1,000, maybe 2,000 people affected by this, just on the local scale. It's just an aggravation. I mean, it's, to me, it's crazy to think that, you know, a summer lifeguard at Silver Lake has to worry about taking a test that's going to test on, you know, whether or not it's wrong to take bribes as a state official. I mean, that's just silly, you know? And I think, you know, one of the things we ought to do is to make an appointment for that liaison sooner rather than later, so that maybe our liaison can bring a number of these concerns to the state level and try and clean up what I see as a, just a nonsensical result. I mean, to think that, you know, a town clerk has to go out and reach out to 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 people, many of whom are volunteers, to give them a copy of the state ethics law, to chase down a signature acknowledging that they've gotten it back. Who wants to do that, just so that they can volunteer to coach rec league basketball? And that's just silly. It's just crazy.
On top of the job we've already asked her to do.
On top of the job we've already asked her to do, right? And that goes to the waste of time and resources, and everybody knows the economic climate we're in, nobody needs to be reminded of that, and we're going to spend, you know, valuable time chasing down signatures from people who volunteer, that presumably don't know that it's a bad idea to take bribes or to accept gifts as gratuities. That's crazy, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't agree with you more. I think the bottom line is, if you look at it, at the end of the day, it's nothing more than I think, nothing but a big smokescreen of what's really happening at the State House. You got the three previous speakers that are all indicted one form or another. You know, you got leadership up there that doesn't know what's going on half the time, and the bottom line is, they're the ones who are creating the issues, and they say, "Well, you know, let's just bring it at the local level, and let's put everybody under the sun under it." You know, it's just nothing but, I think, but a big smokescreen of what's going on, and it's just politics at its best at the State House. And I'm not saying that they're all doing everything wrong, but the few of those that are in power that have seen what's going on has obviously trickled down to the local level, and it's just diverted attention from the real issue of what's happening at that State House, simply put. Thank you.
If I may, you said it well. I believe, I have to believe, because otherwise I'll freak out, I have to believe that the people that put this together had the best of intentions, that ethics reform and in keeping our eye on the ball and making sure that people that are in a public position or that are elected or that could potentially be compromised, we want to make sure that they have an understanding of the law and that they're acting in ethical manners. That said, when I first read this, there's a paragraph in it, and I won't read it, but it says, "I U A municipal employee for conflict of interest law purposes." It is the most general and broad definition that I am so critical of the way, and what surprises me a lot is that I believe that the legislators that crafted this, most of them are probably attorneys. Nothing against attorneys, Mr. Chairman, but I can't believe that intelligent attorneys would let legislation go out that is this broad and this general and without any real definition of who falls under this. It's not entirely clear to me, and I think I'm a reasonably intelligent person, it's not entirely clear to me who is subject to this. As you state, I can't believe that it's the lifeguard. I just can't believe it's the lifeguard and the volunteer coach. Is that what this says? I think it does say that, but I can't believe that that's what they're... I think it does say that, but I can't believe that that's what they're expecting. So I think we have to get some, some strict and, some finite definition that we can adhere to, because if we adhere to this the way it's written, it is what you said, Mr. Chairman, it's everybody, and it's, it's an unwieldy task. And I don't, I can't believe that they're expecting us to take on this level of an unwieldy task in the environment in which we are. So I, I don't know if there's research that we can do, if we can collaborate with our neighboring communities and find out how they are interpreting this, if Town Council can help us interpret this, if there's someone from our legislative branches that can help us interpret what our responsibilities are here. But I think before we go blazing forward to get the lifeguards and volunteer coaches to take tests, we ought to make sure that we've got a proper definition of what, what is an employee or volunteer in the town. That's my personal feeling on the subject.
The point that you made in closing, I think it really gets to the guts of why I think it makes sense to establish the liaison sooner rather than later, because I, you know, one of the things I laughed about when I, when I thought about it was the, the prospect of the State Ethics Commission receiving, I mean, let's say in Wilmington, we figure there's a thousand, 1,500 people that could potentially be required to go through the signatures and the testing, right? You'd figure every town that's, that's like us, right? Tens of thousands of requests for advisory opinions would just be a ridiculous situation to put the Ethics Commission in. But I do think if we have a liaison who can communicate with the other cities and towns' representatives, their liaison, deal with the Ethics Commission, maybe they're able by the end of this year to come up with some policy from the State Ethics Commission that excludes certain groups or criteria of people, without having to go through the legislative process. And again, don't, don't forget too, that the Ethics Law often applies to volunteers, but that's, you know, that's the substantive law saying you can't take bribes even if you're a volunteer. That, that makes sense, but to put people through this exercise for volunteer jobs, that's just, that's uncalled for, I think.
So what would be the process for designating or identifying a liaison?
My understanding is the Board takes a vote and makes that appointment, and I, I think that it makes sense to be the Town Clerk who's called upon to do this work anyways, and who typically is the, the position that provides copies of the open meeting law to anyone who, you know, is appointed or elected to a board that meets an open session, things that, that seems to be the right position to, to handle that, that role, but certainly open for suggestions beyond that.
I agree. I think the Town Clerk should take this on, because in the end, it's going to save her a lot of paperwork if she can narrow down the list of people that are going to have to take this anyway. Six or eight pages of, of the law and the paperwork signed that she got it to them, and they have to sign and get it back. I think that, that's a, I would make that motion if there's no more discussion that we appoint her as the liaison and have her try and get us more information before the end of the year.
All right, we'll accept that as a motion. Do we have a second? And we'll see if there's a second? Any other substantive comments here? All right, then we'll take that as a motion that's on the floor, all in favor. It's unanimous. Plus, if we do it tonight, she doesn't have the chance to say no thank you.
Just thinking, she's not watching.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of a letter that was sent to me and copied to the Board from Patricia Leavenworth, the District Highway Director for the Mass Highway Department, indicating that the project to, for guide and traffic sign replacement, a federal aid project along Interstate I-93, will be put in place. The Highway Department is currently in the process of certifying the low bidder, who is Liddell Brothers, Inc. The bids had been solicited on September 22nd. In general, what folks will see on I-93, and again, this is one of the federal aid projects, that the work under this contract will be from Somerville to Wilmington and will consist of furnishing all necessary labor, materials, and equipment required for the removal of existing signs and supports, and the installation of new guide signs and their supports. The project is expected to be completed within 762 calendar days from receipt of the notice to proceed. And this is one of the federal stimulus projects that I know everybody was anxious to see get started, to put up replacement signs on the highway, as opposed to some of the other infrastructure items, including four of which were sent to the state from the town of Wilmington, all shovel-ready, none of which were, were approved, but it's just information. We have a letter from Christopher Norris, Executive Director of the Metropolitan Boston Housing Partnership, who was thanking the town for its sponsorship of the Housing Conversation Project. We did host one of those housing conversations here at the Town Hall, which gives people the opportunity to provide input to this particular agency, who has responsibility for trying to provide all types of housing to a rather large and diverse group of people who are in need of housing, or who have particular housing issues and concerns, and will continue to work with them on behalf of the town. The Board has a copy of a letter that was sent from the Commonwealth, Bessie Friedberg, who works for the Massachusetts Historical Commission, that includes a nomination for the Middlesex Canal Historic and Archaeological District, which is between Lowell and Boston, and includes portions of several communities, including the town of Wilmington. They nominated the Canal District to be eligible by the State Review Board and signed by the appropriate state historic preservation officer, and the various owners of properties along this way have also been notified, and they have opportunities to comment as well. The Board has a copy of a letter that was sent to them from Martha Goldsmith, the Director of Office of Leasing and State Office Planning for the Division of Capital Asset Management, who notes that there is a RFP, a Request for Proposal Seeking Lease Space, in various communities, including the town of Wilmington, for a particular state agency, in this case, the Executive Office of Health Human Services and its Department of Transitional Assistance and the Department of Mental Health. They're looking for 20,000 square feet of office space. When we get something like this, I immediately provide it to Mr. Moynihan, as you know, and Mr. Moynihan contacts various companies in town, property owners who may have this type of space available. We, we stay on top of that, and, you know, suggest that this is something that they may be interested in. I also note this for the, for the public, in case there's anybody out there that has an interest in leasing 20,000 square feet of office space. Now, in the past, this, you know, this process has worked. DEP, for example, is in a, their regional office is in one of the local buildings here in Wilmington, and so when we, when we have this kind of opportunity and we become aware of this, we do become very proactive in terms of following up with various property owners in town who may have this kind of space available.
That's a lot of space. That's a big...
That's a, that's a large amount of, of space.
Maybe the registry motor vehicle school could go there. The biggest space. It looks like they have grown that one.
The Board has a memorandum from the Town Clerk regarding the warrant for the special election. They're being asked to consider signing the warrant for the special primary election, which will be held on December 8th, 2009, as the Board is aware. This is the election in which people will be voting to select nominees for the United States Senate position that was formally held by the late Senator Kennedy. That election is December 8th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and will be held at the regular precincts in Wilmington, precinct locations, the Boutwell School for Precincts 1 and 2, the Wildwood Street School for Precincts 3 and 4, and here at Town Hall for Precincts 5 and 7, 5 and 6, excuse me, but it does require a vote of the Board of Selectmen to sign this particular primary election warrant.
We have a motion?
Motion, we sign the warrant for the special primary election to be held on December 8th, 2009.
Seconded. All in favor? Unanimous?
The Board also is being asked to consider the request of Sharon George, the Town Clerk, to appoint election workers for the calendar year 2010, and those election workers have been listed for the Board. I don't know if you wanted me to read them all, but they are available to the Board, and I believe they've been provided to the press as well, all the names.
I would think that we could just entertain a motion as presented.
And I stand corrected, I don't think the press has a list, if they're interested, we can, we can make it available. There are some 50 or so names that normally serve as election officials that are just listed.
Fifty volunteers.
Fifty volunteers, subject to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Law.
Better get it in this year, because next year, pay for their vote, I guess.
All right, do we have a motion?
I would move, I'll move that we approve the election workers for reappointment for this election in December, the list as provided to us by Town Clerk Sharon George.
I'll second it. Seconded. Any further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the Board has a copy of a letter. It receives a similar letter each year from the United Nations Association of Greater Boston, indicating that October 24th marks the 64th anniversary of the United Nations, and they ask if the Board of Selectmen would consider signing a proclamation to declare October 24th as United Nations Day here in the town of Wilmington. This year's celebration focuses on the topic of developing a global partnership for development, and they also invite anybody who wishes to attend a ceremony at the State House to do so. And the proclamation has been provided, a copy of the proposed proclamation has been provided to the Board of Selectmen for their review.
But before asking for a motion, I know we, a lot of these things are kind of pro forma, and I know in the past I haven't had a problem with them, but given that it's usually kind of a pro forma type thing, I just wanted to make sure that the Board caught the second-to-last whereas in that thing. And I, I have a, I have a real problem with it. Says, "Whereas the United States has yet to live up to many of its trade guarantees, provides substantially less foreign aid as a percentage of gross national income than its Western European peers, and must act swiftly to perpetuate the international commitment to debt relief." I, I think that's outright disparaging, and I don't, I'm not buying it.
Mr. Chairman, I did also read, that, that one also caught my eye too, and I was going to bring that up as well. Is this something that, if, if we don't do it, it's not like the day's not going to happen, it's just saying that we're not signing this proclamation, that we're agreeing with it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not even sure what they do with these proclamations, but I know, just on principle, I, I know I don't want to sign anything that's, that has anything like that written on it. How it would be used, I don't know, but...
I'm glad to hear you say that. When I read this, when this first came to us, I assumed that this was, as you say, sort of pro forma. I was like, well, here we go again, we'll sign this, and as you guys know, I'm new here. So I was, you know, thinking, boy, how do I articulate that I'm not particularly jazzed about this particular proclamation? The, the upside is, you know, you want to read these and you want to, at least, I feel like I want to give my, my honest opinion about whether or not I'm, I'm in favor of this proclamation. The other side is if we as a Board didn't support it, that doesn't suggest, I don't think. See, I don't want to suggest by virtue of not, not endorsing this proclamation that I don't endorse the United Nations. I think that there's a lot of great things that go on there, but I, I think the perception might be created that, oh, jeez, the Wilmington Board of Selectmen doesn't believe in the UN. I don't think that's being articulated here. I, I do think we can have a challenge with a line of text in a proclamation without, without matter-of-factly opposing the UN or what the UN stands for. And I, I guess that's the challenge that I think we might face, public relations challenge.
Yeah, I, I don't know, as I say, I'm not sure what they, what they actually use the proclamations for. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, but I just know I'm not signing it, so...
I tell you, I mean, that went good right by me when Mike Newhouse, the Chairman, you brought that up. I'm looking at it, it's like bashing your country. I mean, I, I know when they had those disasters there with the Usami, their United States is there, you know, so I'm like, I agree. You know, it's crazy to make politics out of it, but who ended up putting that together?
Some politician put that in there.
Bashing your country. I don't think it's right.
I'll make a motion that we take no action on this proclamation.
It's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
It's kind of crazy to spend that gendartime talking about it.
I know, I know, silly.
I'm sure we're seeing crazier things, right?
Public comments. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes?
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Stacy Murphy, and I actually submitted a letter of interest for the Housing Authority in Wilmington. I really feel that it's a big passion of mine, just being down there for the last two years and seeing some of the things that go on down there. I just feel like I need to be a voice, and having someone there that, you know, doesn't, isn't taking sides or isn't doing anything, you know, just to speak for the residents themselves. And I mean, when I was growing up, when I was a kid, we used to go down to Devon Way to Christmas Carol, sell girls' cookies. No one ever goes down there anymore. It's not a, it's not a nice place to walk around, it's starting to get a little deteriorated, and I just think that somebody needs to be on the Board to make a difference, so...
Appreciate the comments. Let me also say, I, I was pretty sure that was you, and I apologize for not specifically acknowledging you, but I didn't know if you wanted to be called on at that point in time.
No, that's okay. I wanted to wait till the public comments, so... But I would appreciate your vote on when we meet with the Board.
Okay, we'll be taking that up, we'll certainly, we'll expect to see you there.
I try to get on with the state, but it goes as far as the State Appointments Office, and it never goes anywhere, so I've done that twice.
Okay.
So I'd appreciate it.
Appreciate the background and the effort and stepping up.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? New business committee reports. Anything from down here?
I don't have, no, no, nothing. Down here.
Important dates.
Mr. Chairman, October 14th tomorrow, the brush drop-off is available to residents on Old Main, the recycling center on Old Main Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and also on Saturday, the 17th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Want to remind residents that we have children who are interested in playing recreation basketball. At the registration deadline for boys and girls in grades 3 through 10 is October 15th. Contact the Recreation Department. If they want to be guaranteed an opportunity to play, they, they should sign up by the deadline on October 15th. play, they, they should, uh, sign up by the deadline on October fifteenth. Uh, on October nineteenth, again, the Old and Public Information Meeting at the Middle School Auditorium at seven PM. There is going to be a Junction Route Ninety-three Development Area Task Force meeting on October twenty-second at the Tewksbury Town Hall at eight AM. Uh, Wilmington Memorial Library and the Friends of the Library will hold their famous, uh, apple pie bake-off, and I think a number of you have served as, uh, judges, willingly served as judges in the past.
It's a tough gig.
On, on October twenty-fourth, that's a Saturday, and I, I know you're invited to go down at the Memorial Library from one to four PM, as is the public, and if anybody in the public is interested in, uh, submitting their favorite, uh, recipe, it can't just be the recipe, it must be the food item, uh, they can contact the, uh, the library or go to their website and get all the details. And finally, on October twenty-fifth, um, we have the Horribles Parade, which had been approved by the, uh, Board of Selectmen, and will be held, um, on a Sunday for Wilmington youngsters, uh, who are asked to gather with their parents at the Rotary Park at, uh, four-thirty, and then march to the, uh, high school. The event will be held inside, uh, the high school itself on that day. That concludes the regular business, Mr. Chairman.
I, just a quick note before we take a motion to adjourn. Of those important dates, I note that the brush drop-off, literally, is the, uh, the only important event that doesn't require a lot of hours by volunteers. That's the only one. Seriously. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any second at all? Favor?